Yeah, well, especially through me, kind of a... I'm in a different position than some other people.
I just wanted to mention that I shy away from...
No, I think you can make a good point.
You know, um, you know, because I saw...
Isn't it a shame, you have such a good point, you know, that, you know, maybe?
Well, you know, it was...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It was literally...
Yeah.
It was literally...
Right. Yeah, and if somebody knows you're doing that, and, you know, it's still, it's kind of a he said, she said thing, you know? How do you can prove they didn't do that?
Ladies and gentlemen, it's, it's six o'clock, and good evening to you. We're glad to have you here tonight. And welcome to the city council meeting, City of Gastonia, May the fifth. And I'm gonna do it right. I've been practicing. Let's see. Thank you for being here for Cinco de Mayo.
That's right.
Now, I heard one on TV say Mayo, but it's M.A. That's like mayonnaise. M.A.Y.O., is what I read, so.
Cinco...
Ford told me I would swap with this, Cinco de Mayo. Okay. I would, at this time, if I may, I'd like to ask Councilman Dr. David Curlin to deliver the prayer, please, and after which, if we could stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag behind him here. Dr. Curlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Would you bow your heads with me, please? Dear God, Creator and Provider of all, be with us this evening as we go about your work in this city. Provide us with wisdom and guidance to make good decisions for all the citizens of Gastonia. Be with those less fortunate, the infirm, the homeless, those whose lives have taken the wrong turn in some way. Give them hope and faith for a better tomorrow. Thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon us. We are privileged to live in this great community and enjoy the many freedoms that we have. All this we raise up to you. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Okay, let's move along, please. The adoption of the agenda, item C. Is there a motion?
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Item D is approval of the minutes. Number one is the regular council meeting of April 7th. Is there a motion?
Seven.
Is there a second? Discussion? All in favor? And the 100 is the council work session, April, the next day, April the 8th. Is there a motion?
Seven, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Item E is the awards ceremonies and promotions committee, proclamation of Peace Officers Memorial Week, May 10th through the 16th, and Peace Officers Memorial Day, May 15th. Presentation, Councilman James Gallagher, chairman. James?
Chief Hilton, if you don't mind, if I don't know. Mr. Mayor, not many people call me James. I know it's on the agenda, but my mom is probably one. Um, before I begin the proclamation for the police, I just want to say that, in light of the facts that that we, the mayor, the city council, are lifting up our police force, who are our neighbors, our family, friends, who made decisions to serve and protect us. These men and women in blue wear their uniforms day in and day out. They face dangers every time they put it on, not knowing if they'll return home that night. It's a dangerous job. Chief, your people in blue have stressful jobs. I read a comment in a paper recently, and it said that politicians have stressful jobs. I am a politician, and I beg to differ. When a police officer at two o'clock in the morning has to drive up to a home that is having domestic dispute going on inside, and he has to knock on that door, that's a stressful situation. Firemen, you know, they roll up to a house, and the house is on fire, and people are coming out and saying, you know, my mom's in there, and the house is engulfed in flames and smoking. A fireman has to run inside and try to find that person. That's a stressful situation. Me raising a hand for a vote is, does not compare, pales in comparison, for the amount of stress that you all go through. You know, I just want to say we value, in our, in our community values, and your men and women. Thank you. All right. Whereas, it is important for the people of Gastonia and Gaston County to know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of our law enforcement officers and agencies. We applaud the members of those agencies for recognizing their duty to serve people by safeguarding by safeguarding their life and property, by protecting people against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against the oppressed or intimidation. And whereas, our nation more than ever depends on our local law enforcement as our first line of defense. The men and women of these agencies give themselves day in and day out to preserve our homeland security. And whereas, in 2004, 127 peace officers across the nation, from three from North Carolina alone, were killed in the line of duty. And whereas, the members of the law enforcement agency of Gaston County and its municipalities play a vital role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our citizens. Now therefore, be resolved that the mayor and the council of the City of Gastonia do hereby proclaim the week of May 10th to May 16th, 2015, as Peace Officers Memorial Week. And as, and also, of May 15th, 2015, as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And join law enforcement officers nationwide in honoring their fallen comrades and urge the citizens of Gastonia to commemorate law enforcement officers, past and present. Be it further resolved that the citizens of Gastonia recognize and appreciate the contributions made by their local law enforcement officers for handling the difficult situation they encounter on a daily basis. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause this, this seal to be affixed this day, May 5th, in the year of our Lord, 2015, John D. Bridgman, Mayor of Gastonia. And Chief, I'd like to give this proclamation to you. Thank you.
I could just say, Mayor and Council, that certainly I appreciate this proclamation. I'm honored to receive it on behalf of all the men and women in blue, and I'm very proud to work with the men and women that I work with, and I think they do a great job. I would like to point out a couple of events that are coming up that's gonna be in line with this. This Thursday in Cherrville, we're gonna have the Gaston County Peace Officers Memorial Service, and that's where all the agencies will get together, at the First Baptist Church in Cherrville, and that's gonna be at 10:30 this Thursday. That will be followed by a wreath laying ceremony and 21-gun salute at Gaston Memorial Park, right after that service. So everybody will leave there and then move to Gaston Memorial Park for that. And then next Friday, something you may be more interested in, at the police department, at our memorial site, right there on the front lawn, next Friday, May 15th, at 5:00 PM, we're gonna have a wreath laying ceremony there, at the memorial site. Followed by an awards ceremony inside in the community room, and then a family reception following that. So if any of you are able to come, we'd certainly welcome you to come and be with us on that day. But thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
And Chief, what time do you think that you'll be back from Cherrville to Gaston Memorial Park?
Usually, usually that ceremony runs about an hour, so I'm imagining from 10:30 to 11:30, and then we're, we're not gonna have a procession because it's so far from Cherrville over to there, so we're just gonna meet there. So I would imagine 12:00, 12:15, getting back over to Gaston Memorial Park.
Yes.
Chief, I just wanted to make a couple comments, that I've seen a lot of different issues going on throughout the United States. Obviously, some raise a number of concerns. Yet, we've been fortunate to attend a number of the police community meetings with you, and I feel confident in saying that we've turned the corner on that through your guidance, your leadership, and the dedication of your officers. And I think that you have instilled, within your agency and within, in your community, a tremendous degree of trust, and that's come through at many of the gatherings that we've been at, with what the folks have said in the community. And I think that you and your officers need to be proud of that, and you can, need to continue to nurture that as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. I'd be pleased to add one to the agenda, that we are pretty well-known, I think, as a group for recognizing Eagle Scouts. Some of us were, and some of us wanted to be, and maybe for various reasons, could not. And I'd like to call, at this time, Eagle Scout Colin Patruska, and his dad, involved, please, and brother. May I read this to you, please? And it tells it all, I think. Eagle Scout Colin Patruska, Senator Paul Court, Gastonia. Dear Eagle Scout Patruska, on behalf of the city council of Gastonia, I would like to personally congratulate you on your accomplishment of Eagle Scout through your involvement and leadership in Boy Scout Troop 503, which meets at Christ United Methodist Church. Your dedication and hard work are truly commendable. Your Eagle Scout service project was to conduct and install 50 fish inhabit, habitats in Lake Wiley for the Gaston County Peatmont Area Wildlife Stewards, under the guidance of Dr. Bill Jarman, sounds like. During your Boy Scout career, you earned 58 merit badges. Boy! 58 merit badges, served as patrol leader and senior patrol leader, completed national youth leadership training, earned the, now help me to add, Abbotair Day Catholic Religious Award, attended two national scout jamborees, and participated in a trip out into the Boy Scouts of America's high adventure sea-based camp. You have followed in the footsteps of your father, grandfather, and great-grandfather by becoming a fourth-generation Eagle Scout. Additionally, you have excelled in your academic pursuits, and upon graduation from the Highland School of Technology, you will be attending the University of North Carolina at Charlotte to study sports management. You have persevered in accomplishing your goal, and your efforts are much appreciated to make our community a better place to live, work, and play. The city council, and I salute you, Colin, for your accomplishments, and wish you continued success in the future. Do you have anything that you would like to say at this time, and then I'd like you to certainly shake hands with the council?
Thank you. It means a lot to get this award. Appreciate you recognizing me.
Well, it's, it's, you can tell it's a lot of work. It's a doctor, I know, and that's fourth generation, that adds to it, too. Thank you very much. I still have my merit badge, but it did not go down that far, all those, not that many. Okay, thank you very much. Next is the presentations, item F. And thank you, by the way, Jim, for the awards, everyone's. Presentation, item F is, and now here's a James Burgess. No, he's James, okay. Mr. James Burgess, Gaston Youth Connected Leadership Board member, reference Gaston Youth Connected Project update. Hello, James.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
How are you, sir?
Thank you for allowing Gaston Youth Connected the opportunity, just to take a few minutes and update you on the work that we've done in Gaston County over the last year. As you are likely aware, Gaston Youth Connected was initiated as a pilot project in Gaston County, and was made possible through a generous grant from the Centers for Disease Control. We have worked to reduce teen parenthood in Gaston County. I prefer to look at it through that lens, because I would like, this evening, just to update you on some of the work that we've done to improve the situation in Gaston County with regard to employable citizens and cost impact on our community. We well understand that teen parents suffer a negative impact as a result of becoming parents without a plan. And ultimately, what happens is we see a reduction in graduation rates. We see a much greater likelihood of poverty throughout the life of that, that, both the child and the parents. We also find that the, those children, teen parents, arrive at school not as prepared as we would like to see them. They miss benchmarks more frequently, miss third-grade reading score. That is one of the most critical, relevant assessments throughout the course of a child's education. That third-grade reading score, if it isn't where it needs to be, can indicate very easily that in the future, you're looking at a child who's going to suffer from long-term homelessness, from unemployment, substance abuse problems. They're more likely to be incarcerated. It goes on and on. And we just think that's unacceptable, and we know that there are ways to mitigate those circumstances. So what Gaston Youth Connected is doing is working to increase awareness, access, and opportunities for teens to receive comprehensive sex education and health education. We've reached 5,000 children, 5,000 youth, since we started the program in 2010, and very happy to report that the rate of teen pregnancy has decreased by 37% in that time. It's decreasing about 25% faster than it is throughout North Carolina. We're very proud of that. Four out of five of the youth participating in our programs come from communities where there's a great deal of opportunity for them to benefit from the work that's being done here. We are proud of that, and we've done a good job of targeting the work, where the work needs to take place. Finally, on the achievement list in Gaston County, and this is something that we're terribly proud of. We are the only community in the nation participating in this pilot program, which has inverted traditional racial disparities in teen pregnancy. That hasn't happened anywhere else. The CDC is stupefied by that. And I love the fact that when they called and talked to us, they used that word. We did that in Gaston County. Moving forward, of course, there is work that remains to be done. The CDC portion of the project will ramp down in the coming year. At that point, it's up to the community to sustain this work. There are numerous people who have participated in the work so far. We have a robust collaboration. Without the effort of the Health Department, without the effort of the schools, without the effort of so many people in the community, the faith community, we would have never had the opportunity to accomplish this work. But what we will do moving forward is specifically focus on older teens, 18- and 19-year-olds, because most teen pregnancies occur in that age range. 18- and 19-year-olds are also the most difficult children, I say children, they're youth, they're barely children, to interface with, because where are they? They're not at the mall. Where are they? They're hard to find, they're hard to engage. We are working on that. We're working to establish adolescent-friendly care in all clinical settings in the county, to continue a commitment to evidence-based programming, because we know that we are allocating scarce resources to this effort. We want to know that the programming that we're supporting has been proven effective, and that it will generate a return on that investment. And finally, to continue to engage the community, to identify collaborative partners, and foster opportunities for teens to enjoy bright futures, employable futures, and to add to the vibrancy that is Gaston, Gastonia and Gaston County. I've provided a handout, which I'm not going to read to you, because you're all well capable of that, but please take the opportunity to peruse it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions, James?
Mrs. Craig, yes.
Thank you for that presentation.
Certainly.
That was very interesting, and, and do you have any statistics that, what percentage of those numbers that you were using are girls?
Uh, there was, in the, involved in the program, out of the 5,000, it is, if memory serves, it's 47%. We are unique in that we had more young men involved in our programming than we did young women. By a narrow margin, but it was significant nonetheless.
That's what I wanted to find out. Thank you. That's, that's, that's a great balance.
It's critically important, because we don't get here without two people.
That's right.
Yes, sir, Dr. Curlin?
Dr. Curlin? Since there was a lot of funding involved with this, and that funding is essentially going away. Right. I always assumed that there was gonna be a fairly major reduction in, in staff in terms of the number of individuals that were focusing on this endeavor. So is the county going to step up with some additional funds to help to support some of that, you know, staff expenditure, or?
At this time, I can't tell you of any anticipated support from the county.
I didn't know if, if you all had maybe been making a request, since it's also during their budget sessions right now. Since it seems to be so effective, and I think part of the effectiveness has come from the actual effort made one-on-one between, you know, educators and students.
Right. I will say, let me, let me back up from what I said initially. The programming piece, I mean, there, there are really three elements that are involved in the success of this project. There's a clinical component, which has heavily involved the teen youth center at the Health Department, and we took grant funds and remodeled that facility. It's state-of-the-art. We had teenagers come in and actually say, this is what we want to see, and we provided them with the experience that they said they would most appreciate. They walk in, it's very, it's very, it looks very relevant to them, and they have liked the facility. They're very pleased with the service there. The Health Department will continue that effort. Of course, private clinical outreach is something that we will do on an ongoing basis. There's also a programming component, and that is where we achieve a lot of the mass that has made the work relevant and made the work successful. Support for the programming will be the critical issue, because those, those, that work in the community can't take place in the absence of some funding supports. We estimate that that's probably around, typical expenditure in a year would be between $350,000 and $400,000. But when you look at the investment made and the return on those dollars, one child born to a teen parent typically creates an additional physical impact on the community between health services, educational services, social services, of about $40,000. That's a complicated formula, but it is nationally recognized as a standard. So the reduction of 37% that we've achieved since 2010 would net about a $6.5 million savings to the community. So the investment, I think, is well-thought and well-placed, and certainly would generate a return. The challenge is, of course, this is a preventive effort, and unlike putting out a fire, you're preventing a fire. People don't engage as much with that. That's always a challenge.
It'll be interesting to keep the stats going forward and
Indeed.
see, you know, how they, how they look, if they level off, or if they actually start going back up.
It is our intention to sustain this work, because this really was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for this community. And it would be very sad for all of us to allow this work to diminish over time.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
James, thank you very much. Appreciate your... Number two under presentations is Mr. Levi Melvin, Vice President of Gaston Highland Foundation, reference request for in-kind services, basketball tournament and Family Fun Day Urban Center, July 6th through the 11th. Levi, and that's number F2, with the facts and figures in the back.
First of all, I'd like to thank the council for allowing us, the members of the Highland Committee, to come before you guys. Levi was not able to come today because he had to work late. My name is Finland Fair, and I am a member of the committee.
Okay, sir.
We would just like to, pretty much, we're, we're asking for in-kind services for the, for the week, and Monday through Friday, I mean, Monday through Thursday, excuse me, 6:00 to 10:00 PM is, it's a basketball tournament. There'll be basketball games throughout the evening. Friday night is, we're having church night with different little praise groups and things of that nature. Saturday from 9:00 to 1:00 PM is the championship game, and we have like several smaller teams, youth teams that play, and they will all be playing the championship games on that day.
Any questions? Yes, sir.
Finley, is this gonna be similar to the basketball game they just had recently, like a month or so ago, over?
With the Boogie Crank Festival?
I believe so.
Yes, sir. It's similar.
Similar, okay. So you have age groups, basketball age groups, and then, I guess, adults will be playing at the championship game at
Yes, sir.
1:00 in the morning, okay. How many people does it draw usually?
Gosh, we usually draw, draw a crowd, pretty much, anywhere from 100 to 300 people that pretty much come in and pack the gym out.
Excellent, okay. Thank you, I appreciate it. Good luck.
Melvin, thank you. Yes, sir.
How do you relate to the offense that he has?
Pardon me?
How do you relate, what are you doing in addition to what Mr. Burris does?
As in?
Now that Burris comes up here and asks us for a basketball tournament, and what else, and something else?
It's the same thing.
Same thing.
Is this the same thing that Burris does?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We're, we're all in the same, on the same committee, in the Highland Committee. Yes, sir.
He said Mondays through Thursdays, and then he said Fridays and Saturdays, and how many days do you need in-kind services?
Actually, we, we have, we're asking for the in-kind services for the whole time. We're asking for the in-kind services for the whole time.
But what, Monday through Saturday?
Monday through Saturday, yes, sir.
And how many... And what kind of in-kind services are you asking for, and how much?
It's pretty much, um, uh, police and, um, fire param... Fire and paramedics.
Why would you need a fire truck there?
Well, actually, the, uh, fire truck is first response, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. And how many... And just one police officer?
Uh, no, sir. I think they needed a little more than one.
How many?
It's just, pretty much, um, I think there's, like, five officers there at a time, if I'm not mistaken. Just in case. And just for securities purposes.
Yeah, that's a...
Porter, I was there last... Last time they had it, just like, two or three weeks ago. And they have officers outside, and they have officers inside. So, it seems like a lot, big number, but it really isn't. I mean, they... They're not together or anything like that. They're pretty dispersed.
Sounds expensive. And, uh... But why do you need so many officers? Do you anticipate trouble?
No, sir. Um, but, um, I guess we just look at it, the fact it's better to have than not have.
I understand that, but sure is expensive to do that, you know? Now, let me ask you this. If another group from Gastonia, Group XYZ, and then M, N, O over here, and another group come up here, and they want in-kind services, are we going to do that also? I'm for you in-kind services. I'm going to vote for it. But what about other groups?
Well, we just have to take it on a case-by-case basis, one. And two, um, I saw the goodness of what they're doing and how, you know, they're taking kids off the streets, and they're giving them an opportunity to play basketball at night and against...
Other people do the same thing, so I'm just saying, and I understand that.
Yeah.
And I respect that. But what are we going to do if other groups come up and they want? Are we going to also support them?
Well, you know, it depends on, you know, do they meet the guidelines?
What guidelines?
Our guidelines for in-kind services.
Now, have they... Have y'all fill out forms and have guidelines?
Yes, sir, we have.
I just had some questions that I have. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Campbell and Dr. Curlin.
Thank you, sir.
Mrs. Craig.
I understand some of the, um, issue with the, um, having a proactive law enforcement presence there. Uh, I would also like to just briefly, uh, switch over to Chief Hilton. And Chief, I also think that this is a, uh, a paramount, uh, community policing opportunity, uh, for your officers to get out within the, uh, within the community, um, in a fairly defined area. And I think overall that, um, that can pay some dividends to us if we manage that properly, with really engaging our officers with the young folks there in dialogues and some bridge-building. You know, and frankly, it was this... It's actually the same venue that we had, uh, I believe, Chief Smith covered for you. You were away, uh, just several weeks ago. And it was the first police community meeting we had, where we had a number of young folks there, under the age of eighteen. So, I think we could... We could have the opportunity to build on that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Curlin.
Sir, do you recall how long this, uh, tournament has been going on?
This tournament's been going on for about twenty-five years.
Yeah, I was going to say, I've been on council, this is my sixteenth year, and to my recollection, and staff can chime in, whatever. But this has been... These two tournaments, I think they're basically these two annually, right?
Yes, sir.
That they come for, you know, these in-kind services. So, this is... This is business as usual to me, personally. And I know if you're here and you're in our agenda, you've also been vetted by the staff, uh, so that all... Everything is in order, so to speak, so...
Yes, sir.
So, I don't have any problems with this. And I appreciate your remarks, Porter, and I understand exactly what you're saying. And we have this conversation periodically. And maybe if this was a new group, uh, and we were seeing a surge in demand, then I would think there'd be more concern. But I know what you're saying, uh, but we keep having this conversation, and it seems to this point in time that it's not out of control yet, so... But I appreciate your remarks.
Uh, Mrs. Craig.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, um, vote on the, uh, in-kind services for the Gastonia Highland Foundation. I think that's the legal name. The Gaston Highland Foundation.
Second.
Second.
Discussion anymore? All in favor of the motion? It is unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. The, um...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I hate to interrupt, but...
Go ahead.
But I see a young scout out there also, that I don't know if... I thought he was with the Eagle Scout.
I understand he is the leader of the, uh, of the Highland's, um, troop. Is that correct? Or with the troop, or just... I asked...
Just...
Take the stand.
When you've got a... When you've got a scout uniform on, you're going to have to come up to the front.
He's tall.
I'm here for a merit badge, actually. It's, uh, it's for citizenship in the community.
Yeah.
And, um, a requirement was for me to come to a city council meeting and, um, take notes and basically, uh, um, I don't know. Just, uh, I have to take notes and then decide on... Make my own opinion on a dispute, uh, that went over, you know, at this meeting, or, uh... I have to go over specific things that happened, um, things that you guys talked about. So, um, I've actually been here once before for a different merit badge. I think that was for citizenship in the nation. I was just here to observe. But now I'm taking notes, so, uh, so that's why I'm here, so...
Well, thank you very much for being here. We never have disputes. You might have a problem.
I understand.
But I, uh, we agree on everything. Uh, but, um, what troop is yours the same as...
Yes, sir, that is... We're both in the same troop.
I apologize, Brenda, thank you. I asked his dad, the generations there, and I thought possibly you were a brother in the family, but he said you were just with the troop. With that troop.
Well, we're basically family, sir, so...
Well, that's a good answer.
Could we get your name again, please, for the record?
Uh, Andrew Foore, F-O-O-R.
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 Where are you in school and, uh...
Uh, I'm a senior at Forestview High School.
At Forestview?
What rank are you currently, and what rank are you working for?
Um, I'm life. I'm a life scout, and I'm working on my Eagle Scout project, actually, right now. I've just gotten the money fundraised, so I'm about to start on my Eagle Scout project, um, the building process. And that's going to take place at Christian and Methodist Church in the Family Life Center. I'll be building three walls, uh, and that'll be... It'll enclose a room for a storage, uh, that'll be locked. And, um, so, yeah, so I've started on that.
When do you turn eighteen?
Uh, I'll be turning eighteen in about a month, ma'am.
Oh, so you have a month to finish your project?
Yes, ma'am. I think I'll be okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you, Brenda. The, uh... Okay, I think item G is public expression. Each person's limited to a total of five minutes speaking time. And, um, I have, uh... Let's see, Attorney Nancy Pascal first, and then if you'll come forward, Evan.
Mr. Mayor, I am speaking on item twelve. It may be, um, council's preference for me to speak at that time.
I have three names, and all of them are item twelve, and you... I'm going to give you a choice. Would you like to...
I would...
We can't respond to you, the public expression.
I would prefer to wait.
That's fine.
If that's okay with council.
Thank you very much.
And so would Jim Forense.
Okay.
And I don't know who the third one is.
Mr. Brackett, right behind you there.
Okay.
Mr. Ben, do you want to be heard, or do you want to wait till the... We have... Go... But come on up for the answer.
That we're not going to give you.
I would like to also come in, address council at item twelve.
You want to... You want to sign up on the sign-up sheet?
Yes.
Okay, sir. Go ahead, and... I'll call on you. Okay, sir. Mr. Ben Brackett on, um, Oakwood.
Yep, Mr. Mayor.
Been here a little while.
Counsel. Yep. Seventy-one unfortunate years. But I'm still breathing, so that's a good thing. My question will probably be answered by you folks about why we would look at accepting a bid on the Webb Street or the Webb Theater location that would be a lesser bid and put ourselves into the possibility of a lawsuit against the city or county or whatever. You know, that was my main question. And I'm going to make a... I'm going to make a statement, if you don't mind. I'm in total agreement with Jim Gallagher. Chief Hilton and our officers in this city and county, in this country, or get their finger pointed at them more than they get appreciated. And there's something basically wrong there. I know we can't cure that here, okay? But I just wanted to say that. I'm in agreement with our police officers and what they're doing. I know several of them. They hanging it out on a limb every day. They're not... Their job is not to protect us. Their job is to get there before something needs protecting. My opinion. But anyway, that's all I want to say.
Mr. Smith, you want to respond to, uh, that, to Mr. Brackett's?
I'm not supposed to respond, only...
We can, if he just asked a question as far as, uh... Will you want to reserve that one until we have the hearing?
Yes, sir, I don't... I don't have any response from Mr. Brackett this time. We're good.
Okay, all right. Consent agenda.
Um, wait.
Yes.
I would like to...
Yes.
Two items polled. I just have two questions on there, real quick. Uh, item seven and eight. One regarding the, uh, Greenway, and the other one regarding, um, the widening of Tippman Road.
Tippman Road? Okay, uh...
Can...
Come on.
But the rest...
Can we make a motion to approve and then do those in...
Yeah.
Um...
Yeah.
Discussion, or you want them polled so that they're not approved on consent?
To discussion.
Okay, well, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
Already made the motion.
Okay, yeah. Oh, yeah, Porter made the motion.
Oh, that's fine.
So, you're second, okay.
All right. And then we'll... We could discuss them.
Discuss.
All right. Under discussion, and you want to discuss item seven?
Seven, yeah.
As Rusty's... As Rusty's coming forward, it's interesting. Rusty was actually disappointed that he couldn't make the presentation on item eight, and because he was really pleased that we were awarding the contract on Tippman Road and was looking forward to it as a full presentation, and was sad that he was on consent, so... Rusty, you got your...
We are blessed to have a manager with such a great sense of humor.
He's a keeper.
Here are my questions for, uh, the Greenway. It's four hundred thousand dollars, eighty thousand from Gastonia, three hundred and twenty thousand from the state. Who owns the land that the Greenway is going to be on?
Uh, the city of Gaston has a, uh, a Greenway easement across that property. The land itself is, uh, still in private ownership, but we have rights to put that Greenway there.
All right. And is it going to disrupt much of the land? I mean...
No, actually, uh, there's already a sanitary sewer line, an outfall that runs down through there, where we have laid that Greenway out to take advantage of the cleared sewer easement that's already cut through the woods. So, it should be pretty minimal disturbance.
Okay. Um, the other thing is, Rusty, I'm not sure... I know it said phase one, but I don't know... Does that go from where it... You know, it starts over here at the police station, and it goes on up to where eighty-five is at?
Another map up on Elmo that zooms in a little bit.
Yeah, please.
The map that's, uh, in your, in your agenda item is a great map, because it shows the entire connectivity all the way from, you know, down...
Yeah.
Down at, uh, near the armory and where the YMCA is talking about building, all the way up to potentially to Gaston County Park and that great Carolina Thread Trail connector.
Right.
But the area we're talking about in specific is, is this section between Bold Avenue here, north up to where the trailhead ends, up at Rankin Lake Park.
So, you can get on it at Rankin Lake Park and walk to Bold and then walk back?
Yes.
So, it's not going to be connected all the way down here yet?
Not yet. Uh, as we all know, the NC DOT is doing some improvements at I-85...
Supposedly.
...and when that project is completed, that's when that other kind of missing chunk of the Greenway will be done.
Yeah, okay, all right. That is it. I have no further questions.
That's on seven. Yes, ma'am.
I have question on number eight.
Can we go to eight? Okay? Yeah, go right ahead.
Can I?
Yeah.
Okay. Sea Land Construction.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, have we ever done in business with them?
A lot.
Okay.
They were a big contractor with our nineteen ninety-two bond projects. Uh, they built Gaston Line, Robinwood, and one other that is stationed right now.
With the three hundred thousand dollar contingency, does that still keep us under budget?
Yes.
By how much?
For this project.
For that project, right. For the Tippman Road.
Um, let me see, a total of one-point-three million...
Okay.
For that project.
Okay. Uh, if this, um, gets approved tonight, when do you anticipate any beginning on Tippman Road?
We're thinking about two months. That's the typical time it takes for them to get their insurance and their bonds and all their paperwork turned in to us, and then for us to approve it and issue them a contract and an...
And how long will it normally take? In good conditions?
The construction?
Uh-huh.
Probably about nine months. This contract, we gave them a year.
How are we going to divert the traffic to Gaston Christian? Or is that...
Uh, Piedmont Charter or...
Piedmont Charter's on the corner there.
Right.
But Gaston Christian, from, from West Gastonia, everybody that goes to Gaston Christian goes Hudson all the way out and hits Tippman and then takes a left. then takes a left.
So, so one of the things that's going to be happening, that the, the project engineer over this, uh, Jason Wallace, one of the items that's on his agenda, is to start reaching out to the folks in that neighborhood, the, the main generate, traffic trip generators, and start talking to them. We've talked a lot with Piedmont Charter about their school. I don't think we've touched base with Gaston Christian yet, but, uh, the, the, everything, the, the feedback that we've heard from most folks is, is just do what you have to do right now, um, but let's really work hard at the beginning of the next school year because that's when you get new parents coming in who don't know traffic patterns, that's when, that's when the work really takes place. So, so our goal is kind of that August period to really sort that out at that point.
Okay, okay, thank you.
They have a couple of boxes.
You could take Cremington Christian there too, so.
Okay.
Just, FYI.
There's several ways to get around there. Mr. Kim?
Thank you, Your Honor. Rusty, uh, so from your, uh, statements, our traffic diversion plans should be in place prior to the beginning, we, we really need those diversion plans in place prior to the school year starting.
Yes, uh, the, the plan for this road is that it, it will not be closed during construction. It will remain two-way traffic during the entire time. Um, so what we're really talking about as far as traffic diversion is, is more about the actual dealing with the nastiness of construction with the confusion that comes with opening day of school. That's, that's when it's all going to kind of come to a clash.
Okay, what about, uh, flagging and, uh, down one lane restrictions, are we, are we anticipating those?
There, there will be some, there's, there's always going to be a cross line pipe or, or a piece of equipment that has to kind of get out in the road to dig a ditch or do something. Um, there, there is a plan for that, uh, the kind, there's, it was actually laid out very well in advance in the contractor's bid on that, there's, there's money dedicated for them maintaining that.
Okay.
So that, that is there, and that was one of the things DOT mandated that we include in our plans.
As, as Mayor Protem Craig indicated, um, I would think that we would want to have some language in there to minimize those one lane closures, uh, certainly not around, uh, the time when school is going to be getting in, and, um, you know, obviously when, when it's going to be letting out.
Yeah, they're, they're not allowed to do any lane closures prior to 9:00 AM.
Okay.
Um, and I think they have to have the road, um, done after 4:00 PM.
Okay. Brenda, would that suffice as far as your folks coming from the other side of town?
I think so, it's just as long as they, you know, the road's not closed, and that there is some consideration during those peak hours of school, yeah.
Thank you, Rusty.
Yes, sir.
Rusty, this is it, pretty much Mayor Protem Craig had asked it, when, you're saying July 2015, they're going to start construction, or are they just going to start putting up cones?
No, the, um, their time starts, their clock starts ticking.
Okay.
If they want to waste their time on the front end, you know, we'll prod them and cajole them as best we can, but, but their clock starts ticking.
And they got a year.
They got a year.
And it'll be completed.
Yep.
It's much needed, and that's excellent news. Thank you, sir. And that is it.
That's it.
Okay, the, I guess we voted already the consent agenda.
Yeah, we need to vote.
I mean, I mean, I made a motion and a second, they're under discussion. Any other discussion, comments? All in favor of, uh, consent agenda?
Now, may I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
Uh, dealing with the Time Warner part on the consent agenda, this, could we write a letter of staff with your signature on it, Mr. Mayor, asking Time Warner about these little digital, uh, additions to the TV when you plug into the wall? They say that everything's going to go digital and all these, uh, channels will be unavailable to you if you don't have one of those, if you don't have a digital box, a, a set-top box, or if you don't, if you just plug your TV into the wall now, you aren't going to get all these channels. Now, I'd like to write a letter, and they said they'll give you this, uh, the digital, the little small digital thing that, that, uh, that you can run your line into, your TV into the wall, that'll help you get those digital channels now. They're going to let you have it, then a year from then, they're going to charge you $2.75 apiece. Well, that's, that's pretty rotten to me, they're going to force people to pay all that money. Why, I'd like in the letter to ask them why, if you have a digital TV, which you can get now, why you can't plug that in the wall and, and get the digital signal? Why have you got to have an additional, uh, uh, unit attached between the wall and your TV? I just think that, uh, that it's just a way for them to make more money. And I'd like the, the, the half of our citizens to, to send a letter to them, ask them why our citizens have to pay for that, and why the, the digital signal can't be, uh, uh, it's coming off the line anyway. Why, if you have a digital television, why you can't receive that directly, why you have to have a unit? Would the council have any problem with the staff writing a letter with the mayor's signature, asking them to answer those questions?
No problem. Any questions? Ed, you? We're okay with it.
Yeah, you know, the, the thing about it is, uh, years ago, we used to actually grant a license and we had a franchise.
Right.
And we, and that would last a period of time with Time Warner Cable Vision, you know, Jones Inter Cable in the old days. And so the city actually could work with your local cable provider to be able to make changes. That's how we got the, the education channel and the government channel through negotiations. Uh, the legislature's taking that away from us, uh, they, they do what they will, but we'll be glad to send them a letter and see, you know, and talk to them about it, but they are pretty doggone independent now. All of these carriers are, they inform us as to what's going on, but we don't really have any leverage, uh, but we'll be glad to...
We can ask them.
We can ask, we can ask.
Couple of hours ago, I, ironically, I just saw on, on the news that, and I forgot, what's the other, there's another, it starts with a C, uh...
Charter.
Charter? Other than Charter, I spent the...
Comcast.
Comcast. Uh, they had, they were going to buy Time Warner, but backed out, or something happened. And so Charter has now come forward, but they're thinking that maybe they can combine all three together, a Charter can put a family together there. I believe they're, if I remember correctly, they're out of Louisville, uh, but they're up in the mountains, up in, in, uh, Wautogu County. But, um, I think that they are talking about maybe a merger of all three now, whether, but we'll continue on.
Right.
We'll continue because that may never happen, they just, they just came up just earlier today.
Well, Comcast and, Comcast and Time Warner were pretty much discouraged by the FCC, I think, because it'd be too much of a monopoly, be bad for the customers, so that's why that happened. They weren't going to get it.
Well, this, if, if this were to, were to happen, what they're talking about, this could hopefully be beneficial for the, for some...
Yeah, well, I would hope, maybe we could get some competition in Gastonia for, for Time Warner.
Yeah, right, exactly. Okay, item nine is the moving along on the regular agenda. Um, if I want to, you can skip over any that you'd like to, but the, uh, public hearing, maybe that we could buzz through, on the fiscal year, uh, 2015, Federal Transit Administration, Section 5307 Transportation Grant Resolution authorizing the filing and execution of, uh, applications with the United States Department of Transportation and the North Carolina Department of Transportation for grants under the Urban Mass Transportation Act of 1964 as amended. Presentation would be, is coming by Debbie Key, Fleet Services Manager. Debbie?
Thank you. Mayor, members of council, this is a public hearing for filing of FTA 5307 grant funds to support Gastonia transit operations and capital expenditures. Um, and those are shown in the chart in your agenda item. Likewise, a legal ad was placed in the Gastonia Gazette with this information on April 19th. Therefore, I would like to ask the mayor to open up the public hearing for any public comments.
I would like to open up for discussion this time, thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, any questions?
Is anyone signed up, Mr. Mayor, on the sign-up sheet?
No, there are no more. Any questions of Debbie on this? You've got, it's in item nine over in the exhibits.
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
Debbie, this is a grant for, is it 3.3 million?
It is.
And that's something you don't pay back, that's just money given to you, correct?
It's a reimbursement grant, so as we spend it, we are reimbursed.
Okay, so we put it on our, on our books and we delve into it for these items that are listed here in our agenda.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
There's no other questions, Mayor, no one to speak, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Second here, sir.
Second, discussion, all in favor? Okay, is there a motion to be approved?
Yes, I'm sorry.
No.
Make motion.
Motion is by Debbie Key.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Item 10 is a public hearing for fiscal year budget, you want to just hold that one just for a few minutes?
Sure.
Um, is, um, Christie here? There she is. Um, item 11 is the Public Hearing Economic Development Agreement for, uh, Project Samba. Presentation, Christie Crisp, Business Service Manager, and that's your item number 11, ladies and gentlemen.
Yes, sir, item 11. Um, we have, um, an economic development agreement...
Ms. Crisp, and let me interrupt you, Mr. Mayor, can you declare the public hearing open?
Yes, it's open, yes, sir. Thank you.
We have an economic development agreement for your consideration this evening, this is Project Samba. They are interested in building a spec building on Site E on the Gastonia Technology Park. Site E is the end of Repi Court, they're at the cul-de-sac. Um, Project Samba has been, um, in this business for a while, they've been successful in building spec buildings in the Charlotte region, um, and this would give us a, um, different opportunity for recruiting business to the technology park. They are proposing a 1.2 million dollar, 50,000 square foot building that would be expandable to 100,000 square foot, um, there on Site E. So, um, for your recommendation this evening, we are proposing, they have asked for, and we are, um, proposing a CIP grant similar to what we have done for other projects in the tech park. This would be, um, a reimbursement of the taxes that they would be billed of 100% for up to three years, and would be, um, null and void if they sell the building prior to that. So they would market the spec building to a potential customer that would want to buy that.
Questions, Christie? Anyone? Yes, sir.
Christie, I, I need some clarification on the proposed incentive aspect. Now, we're indicating that this incentive will be void if the property sells within 36 months. Now, if a partial, um, uh, remuneration is given to this company and then it sells, where, where do we stand with that? Is that a refund situation, or do we keep that money and then it's void from that particular day? When the, well, obviously when the sale is finalized?
So if it's a partial year sale?
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking?
Or, well, one year, you know?
I think I'm going to look the legal, would we, we have...
There's no claw, there's no clawback, so then it would terminate at that point, they sold the property, there wouldn't be any further grants.
But if there, if, um, what would happen to the incentives that were already given at that point?
There's no clawback, and it's, it's currently drafted.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. Karul, Mr. Gav.
I guess the follow-up to that would be, is there, uh, a prorated share of the taxes for a portion of the year up until the time of, uh, you know, closing on the purchase?
I'd have to research that and get back to you, Dr. Karul.
Because, I mean, that very likely could happen.
Sure.
At any point in time prior to that 36-month expiration date, so I would think we would want to have that, you know, kind of fine-tuned before we finish this up. Uh, so, I mean, I would recommend a proration of the taxes on a partial year. I mean, I don't know, how are the taxes normally paid, aren't they paid, uh...
Mayor Council, the, the way the contract is set up, there is no prorated share. Basically, if they pay their taxes and the building hasn't sold yet, that grant equivalent to that is reimbursed to them. If they sell in a partial year, their taxes are due and there would be no rebate during that partial year. That's the way it's currently set up.
Okay, so it's, they're granted until they sell, and then at that point, their taxes are due from that date forward?
That's correct.
Okay, so that, that clarifies it, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Just, two questions. One, so this company, Samba, is going to build a 50,000 square foot shell building and they're going to market it?
Correct.
Um, and they can expand it to 100,000. Now, here on our agenda is where Samba's going to be located, correct?
Correct.
Um, is that the 50,000, or is that the 100,000?
That is the entire property that you see there, the building is actually not embedded on there, so that property could hold the 100,000, expandable option, yes.
And behind here, it looks like there's some land, can anything fit back there, or is it just the typography is not good, or what?
It's floodplain.
Floodplain.
Floodplain, okay, alright, thank you.
And I will note Gaston County did approve this last week, and Donnie Hicks is here from the EDC if you did have any questions for him.
Do, uh, one other question, how, this count, uh, this company's track record on selling track, uh, spec buildings, how is it? Is it like, they're saying 36 months, so three years?
Yes, they have been successful doing this in the region. Um, as far as a specific quantity of, of what they've done, I do not know. Donnie may be able to answer that.
Well, I know, I was just wondering their, their success rate, that's all.
Ms. Crisp?
Um, Christie, did I hear you say that the county has already voted on this?
Correct, last week.
Okay, uh, and if, if this body, this governing body, uh, approves it tonight, when would they start, uh, construction?
Donnie, do you know that?
Mr. Mayor, I remember Donnie was hiding back there.
Yeah, he's sleeping.
It's good to have Donnie here.
I'm not wearing a suit because I don't have one, I was at an industrial site until a little while ago, and I, I don't wear a suit out on sites anymore. We've already worked with the company to do preliminary engineering work, they've hired, um, what used to be Concorde Engineering Services, now CES in Coveras County, to do all the site work, so we've done some preliminary site work with them. Uh, WHN Architecture already has the building design, it's going to be similar to one they built in Lincoln County, we're just modifying it to fit the utility situation at our park. And so I think you could see them go fairly quickly. The county has a basic contract ready to go, we're going to add your piece to it, and when we do, they're ready to close. So I think you could see construction in early fall.
Early fall.
Questions of Mr. Hicks?
Yes, sir.
Hi, Donnie. A quick question, how are they faring in Lincoln County with their project there?
That's one of the reasons they're here, they built the building anticipating to hold it for some period of time.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the building was acquired by a company that had announced that they were going to come to Lincoln County, and they switched to this building, so they built the building and it was almost immediately sold.
Wow.
They have no inventory, so we were working with them to come to Gaston.
Wonderful, thank you, sir.
Back to you.
Donnie, I know you've said many times that what we need are more spec buildings.
Right.
Buildings that are already built, uh, leased shells that somebody could move right into. So this is, uh, hopefully maybe a beginning of, of many more like this.
I would hope so.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I've been here a long time, and this is the, uh, the lowest level of inventory you've had of industrial buildings I've seen, and even before I got here. Really? Today, we have one building with 30,000 square feet in the city of Gastonia, if we can get a special situation resolved, it's probably going to be leased. The next largest building would be a building in Stanley we think will come on the market in a couple of weeks, that's 120,000. So normally, we might have six, eight, 10 buildings just in Gaston alone that we can market, today we have zero. It's a nice problem, we don't have a lot of inventory sitting around, but at the same time, it really, it really hampers our ability to recruit.
Donnie, where are we right now with site acquisition for future efforts like this?
We're meeting with Mr. Munn and Mr. Baumdier tomorrow morning about a couple of different options. The county is doing this new program to do, um, site analysis, site engineering, and the city has submitted a site to us, and it'll go to the EDC board on May the 12th. Uh, the city's agreed to put in money, we think Electric Cities will put in money, and it's a site that I think our board will prioritize to begin some initial site planning on this, on this parcel to see how it can be developed. But we're in desperate need of sites.
Right.
We have literally developed everything, not just in Gastonia, almost everything that we can within reason. We've consumed, uh, almost 350 acres in the last 36 months, and to duplicate that's going to take a long time. Even if we're sitting out there today ready to go, the parcel was available, one single parcel of 350 acres, it's still going to take a long time to get it done, and that parcel really doesn't exist.
Yes, sir.
Donnie, what about, um, Gaston Technology Park, can that expand at all? Is there a farm back there that the heirs may be looking to sell property or so?
We do have some expansion options, and we've designed the park to allow us to expand. If the owner chooses to sell to us, we do have some expansion options.
The Joe Ratchford property, is that available?
We're, we're going to talk about that tomorrow.
Yeah, okay.
But the, the tech park, the road that we built to serve Dixon Valve and Coupling, we could have done it the cheap way and just let them have curb cuts off Court Drive, off Gaston Technology Parkway. We took the sale proceeds from the land and built a road beside of it, so if we're able to acquire the property behind it, we'll simply extend that road into the site, and we could be ready to go on it in short, short notice.
Is there, um, property, is there enough property, uh, at the, uh, Industrial Park Investment City, what is it, Southwood or...
South Ridge.
Or at the South Ridge, uh, to build a shell build, I mean, shell building there?
Uh, there could be, we have, uh, an Israeli proj, a project called ToSAF that's building out there right now.
Right.
We have, uh, it took us seven years to acquire a house out there, now that we've acquired that house, we have another 50 or 60 acres, the city gets the sewer, City Gaston gets the sewer, and the rest of it is Bestham City Utilities. I think we have six projects on that site right now, and one more coming tomorrow. That's the kind of level of activity we have and the scarcity of sites that we have.
Oh, okay, great.
So we, I think we have, uh, three or four sites out there that we could eventually go to, if we need to, but those are going to go faster than you think.
And how long to get that one house?
Seven years. Seven? I've been, I've been working on helping assemble that land since I was 23.
Yeah.
I either got to get a heck of a lot better at it or quit.
Any other questions? Mr. Munn, I think, uh, if you recall, the, this Mr. Hicks seems to get it out faster Mr. Munn, I think, if you recall, the, this Mr. Hicks seems to get it out faster than the former city manager, Mr. Hicks, that we have for years. I mean, he got it out, but I don't know if he.
Not as many jokes, though.
No, there'll always be jokes.
Anything, any questions of Christie or Donnie? Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to close a public hearing and approve.
Second here, sir.
Discussion, all in favor? Thank you both very much. Oh, that sounds great.
Yep.
Donnie, go buy a house or something, hurry back. Thank you.
That seems like a long time.
Okay. Let's go on to item number twelve, if we may, and we'll come back to item ten. And that was eleven. Web building approval or rejection of the bid, the presentation, Myra Nichols, Housing and Neighborhood Administrator. Myra?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As presented in your agenda, we was directed by council to start the upset bid process after receiving the Epic Chop House bid of three hundred and seventy-five thousand. The upset bid was received by Homestead's Grill and Tap House for three hundred and ninety-three thousand eight hundred. So, the second upset bid period was started and it ended without receiving another upset bid. So, currently, the final bid is from Homestead's Grill and Tap House for three hundred and ninety-three thousand eight hundred. And as condition of the offer, it must come to council for final approval.
Okay, questions? By the way. No, I'm sorry. Any questions of Myra?
No questions of Myra.
Yes. All right.
But you had some people sign up.
I have some people that'd like to speak next.
Yes, I believe so.
Three, two. This, Myra might need you. Okay. Ms. Nancy Pascal, you know, you make me feel good telling me you'd like to wait because I messed up at the last meeting and I didn't read the top of the list and I was asking everybody, would you like to have this now or would you like to have the hearing? I didn't this time. You're first and then that, Mr. Marasso, after you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council members, thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. You did receive a letter from our office several weeks ago regarding this issue. And I'm not going to repeat the letter, but I do want to reemphasize several points and offer some suggestions to council with respect to the issue before you. I represent Jim Marasso and Rick Mack, both of whom are here. They have successfully owned and operate two restaurants, the Epic Chop House in Mooresville and Chillfire in Denver. And my husband and I have been fortunate enough to enjoy both of those restaurants here in the last several weeks. And I would encourage you to do so if you have an opportunity. My clients have spent considerable time since the March meetings regarding the web theater property in review of the site plan, the redevelopment needs of the city and that property and their own business plans for the property. And after careful consideration, we reached the conclusion that the current plan of disposing of the property through the procedures of one sixty A dash two sixty-nine, the statutes that deal with just the public disposition of property through public bids, will not allow for the completion of necessary and essential redevelopment or result in the highest and best use of the property. Accordingly, tonight and through our previous letter, we are requesting council to reject any and all offers that have been made to this point and to move forward under General Statute one sixty A dash five fourteen with a request for proposals to complete the redevelopment of the property. The previous letter that I sent to you suggested some conditions that could be part of a redevelopment plan. And some of those possible conditions would be a minimum bid of a certain dollar amount, say, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which was discussed earlier, with financing or without financing by the city. Further investment in the property of at least three hundred thousand dollars could also be a condition. Opening of a business within six months of closing and taking possession of the property. Replacement of the grease trap. My clients have determined that the grease trap currently there is a risk to the city's sewer system and would suggest that that be remedied at this redevelopment of the property. And also, that it flow out, that there be a hose and pipe installed to have that flow out into the alleyway instead of its current configuration. Renovations to the balcony area could be one of the conditions that the city could place. A banquet room to increase the space. Creation of a minimum number of jobs, such as twenty jobs that would at least have thirty-three hours of work per week. Educated waitstaff with executives and sous chefs on staff. And the availability of meeting staff with, I mean, of meeting space with the capacity to have thirty people in seating within walking distance of City Hall, of the city planning area, the Garland Center, and other downtown businesses. A full-scale bar area with seating for twelve to eighteen patrons and incorporation of local produce and products and ingredients into the daily menu. The use of the procedures under one sixty A dash five fourteen will allow council to incorporate these types of conditions and covenants and restrictions which you as council members believe to be in the public interest and in furtherance of the redevelopment of our downtown. While we defer to the expertise of the city staff in identifying these conditions, I'll be happy to share the conditions that I just went over with staff if it is council's determination and decision tonight to reject all bids and proceed under a redevelopment process. As you know, the proceeding under one sixty A dash five fourteen also requires advertisement for bids and the opportunity to receive upset bids and thus does not preclude the participation of other parties or other interested entities under the terms and conditions requested by council and staff. It just gives council more flexibility in looking at the whole picture instead of just looking at a dollar amount. Should council choose to proceed in this fashion, my clients would welcome the opportunity to compete with other bidders under a redevelopment plan. We believe that a redevelopment plan ultimately benefits council and the city of Gastonia in bringing the highest and best long-term use and value for this property. In closing, let me thank you again for your review and consideration of this matter and for your commitment to the success of downtown. It's coming, I see it as a citizen and as a person that enjoys downtown. We were just here with our Bridge Club Saturday night at Tequila's. Had to go to the outside area, which was beautiful and lovely, and then we proceeded to wait and to wait because the entire restaurant was full and over capacity. What a glorious thing that was. And to see the Forestview Prom Goers going down the street, taking their photos in front of the beautiful park and at the Rotary Pavilion, it just made my heart want to sing. And I say that sincerely. It was great to see that vibrant part of downtown. And we believe that a true redevelopment of the web theater could bring that kind of vibrancy to downtown. And we look forward to the opportunity to present to you a full-scale proposal of what could be done with this property as opposed to just looking at a dollar figure. For that reason, my clients would ask that you reject all bids tonight and proceed under a redevelopment plan for the property. My clients hope to be part of this vibrant downtown and bring their commitment to you and to our fair city. I'll be glad to answer any questions. I also have Mr. Marasso here who can answer any questions you may ask.
He's next on the list. Any questions of Ms. Pascal?
Yes, sir.
Nancy, you do know that we sold that parking lot over there or it's pending sale with Art Space and they're going to be building in that parking lot there. Would it be a problem to have valet parking for, if this panned out?
Oh, I'm confident it would not be. And in the city of Mooresville, there is complimentary valet parking. Yes, in the city of Mooresville, there is complimentary valet parking offered by the Epic Chop House. And, for the entire block, excuse me. So, I would presume that that would not be a problem and would be something that could flow into the business plan for the property.
Thank you.
And my clients are greatly interested because there is going to be art space. That's going to add to our vibrancy and as people wait to get into what is sure to be a success, successful restaurant by Mr. Marasso, Mr. Mack, they can go and buy their art at the galleries at Art Space.
Any other questions of Pascal? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Marasso, you're next.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Council, and everybody else, we're passionate what we do. We've done this, I've got a proven track record in Mooresville. And I really, after going to four council meetings, have seen more than just the business end. I see the passion of the council, the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and what we're trying to do with the city. And I would love to be the catalyst of this. I will be a part of the city, should I get the opportunity. I will be a part of this restaurant and I would love to be a part of the development of this town. With the bid process, we think we will certainly add to the building, which will, as I mentioned before, increase our base. But we have a minimum of twenty employees. I had to be twenty full-time, but we have fifty to sixty-five in our Mooresville restaurant. And we've got fifty-five employees, not all full-time, in our other restaurant, at Chillfire. We are for the education of our employees. We are here to develop our employees, develop our concept, and be a center of our community. And one of the things I'm very, very passionate about is people because they sure do make your life interesting. The thing that I will guarantee is I will be a part of this restaurant. My desire is not to open up multitude of restaurants. My desire is to open up unique restaurants and the people working with me will be passionate about the city that they serve and the business opportunity that we have. I guess why I'm here so many times is, boy, I'd love the opportunity and I can't wait for that opportunity to hopefully come my way. That's all I have to say. I'm just passionate what I do and enjoy what I do.
Questions of Mr. Marasso? Anyone? Thank you, sir. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Allow me to introduce myself again. I think I introduced myself to everybody on my way in, but my name is Jeff Taylor. I'm an attorney with the Lincoln County Bar and I'm here tonight to represent Byron and Christie Sackett, who are the one hundred percent owners of Homestead's LLC, which is the operator of Homestead's Grill and Tap House in Linkington. It would be the operators of their proposed restaurant in the web property. I presented you with the letter earlier and I won't bore you by essentially reading that to you. As the letter outlines, we just kind of reiterated what we see about the process that you've already got in motion here. The statutory bid process, as you're already aware, is set up to design, is designed to maximize the return to the taxpayers. You have a procedure to put a process, a project out for bid, which you did. You receive bids, you received an upset bid. There was a high bid, time was allowed for additional upset bids and none were made. And at this point, as you know, the Sackets have the high bid. And essentially, my presentation tonight could be just summed up by saying, just follow through and let us have the property on our bid, honor our bid. I would like to point out just a few things that are not in my letter. I personally have known Mr. Sackett for over ten years and I don't know, I know you've met him previously during his appearances here. But let me just tell you a little bit about my observation of his operation in Linkington. He has been a very astute observer of the marketplace. Lincoln, Linkington has been historically underserved by restaurants, other than maybe your country cooking kind of places and fast food kind of stuff. You don't really have anything that's in between or above that, or at least you didn't have, say, fifteen years ago. And Mr. Sackett came in with the Fats chain and he was an investor in that. The way they operate, I believe, is they try to get a local partner in the corporate chain, corporate parent, partners with a local person to set up the operation and they provide all the corporate support and advertising and that sort of thing. And he opened the Fats Restaurant, operated very successfully for about ten years and then sold out and decided to pursue some other ventures for a little while. And the pull of the restaurant business was apparently very strong and he decided to come back in. And at that point, he had identified that there was still a very strong need for something of a similar category in Linkington. And he created his own independent brand, which was Homestead's, and it operates very successfully. It's within a mile of the Fats operation. They both continue to operate very successfully. So, I just would like to point out that he knows his business very well. He knows the market very well and he has looked at this area and believes his concept would do very well in downtown Gastonia and would create a lot of vibrancy here as well. No disrespect to these gentlemen or my good friend, Ms. Pascal. We're not here to criticize anybody else. We're just here to say, we played the game, we put our bid in, you know, we feel like we're entitled to have our bid honored at this point. I'd like to point out a couple of other things about Mr. Sackett. He's been a very good corporate citizen in Linkington. He's been very supportive of some of our local charities. And the kind of thing that he has done, I'll give you an example from a couple that I was involved with. At Fats, he allowed nonprofits to come in on a Saturday morning. Fats is not normally open for breakfast. Provided a little bit of staff support and guidance, but let the volunteers from the nonprofit come in and cook breakfast and sell tickets as a fundraiser for various nonprofits in the community. That was a very successful concept and it's been done several times. And so, that's just the kind of operation he runs and it's been a very good addition to the fabric of the Linkington community and both the business community and the nonprofit community in Linkington. By way of rebuttal, I'd just like to point out here, again, with all due respect to Ms. Pascal's comments, there's nothing that we've seen in the record so far with respect to this proceeding or this property that says that it needs necessarily three hundred thousand dollars of investment. What's the magic, what's magic about three hundred thousand dollars? Mr. Sackett is aware that there's some issues about the grease trap and he's prepared to address those as part of his upgrades that would be done before he would get underway. But as I mentioned in the letter, he chose not to go into details about what his upgrade plans might be for competitive reasons and also because the proposal to sell the property didn't call for that. So, in summary, again, we just, we feel like we've played the game according to the rules that were laid out at the beginning. Would like to see you follow through and honor our high bid. And at this point, I would like to introduce Mr. Jamal Farley, excuse me. He's with the management team of Homestead's. Mr. Sackett wanted to be here tonight, but he had longstanding plans to be out of the country on a family vacation and didn't anticipate this meeting would fall during that window. So, I'll tender Mr. Farley to you if you have any specific questions about Homestead's operation or I'll be happy to answer any questions myself if I can.
Any questions, Mr. Farley or Mr. Taylor, Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Two questions, Mr. Taylor. Number one, if I understand the letter that we were just proffered, and I really don't like when we get letters right when we sit down, but you're indicating a straight purchase with private financing, so you would not be going to the city of Gastonia for financing. Am I reading that correctly?
Is that correct, Your Honor? That's correct, yes, sir.
Second question, what, we've both talked, both of the groups have talked about improvements to the existing facility. Do you have a timeframe of occupancy when the building would be up and theoretically would be up and serving customers?
Theoretically, when we purchased this, our first building, it took approximately around three months. We renovated a former Ryan's building, so with demolition and reconstructing took, and staffing and so forth took around three months. With this location, we project about two to three months as well, depending on, I have not personally been in the building except to go dine there when it was nixed. But based on things that I've spoken with Byron, about two months tops, depending on what needs to be done as far as things in the kitchen and the grease trap as well.
Thank you, that's all I have, Your Honor.
Yes.
I don't have a question for you guys, so let me back off from that for a minute. I just have a general comment, so if anybody has any more questions for these guys.
Okay, go ahead.
No, okay, thank you. No, I have a rather long statement because we did get the letter from Ms. Pascal some time ago and then, of course, we got this letter tonight from Mr. Taylor, I believe it is. But having read his letter, I think it falls within the comments that I prepared. And thank you to our attorney, Ash Smith, for helping me prepare this statement. And forgive me for reading it, but it's a little bit lengthy, so it had to be written out so I don't forget anything. But what I am doing is I make a motion to reject all bids. But what I am doing is I make a motion to reject all bids, and I have given this considerable thought to the project in what would be in the best interest of the overall redevelopment of downtown Gastonia. When possession of building was first returned to the city in January, the council did not know about the issues with the grease trap in the building being undersized, nor the repairs needed to the kitchen floor surrounding the grease trap. That was information that surfaced after we had already put the ball in motion to get the building out onto the market, because, as we all said at that time, we don't want the building sitting there in the dark. Let's move as quickly as possible. However, now that we do know about the issue, I think that those repairs are very important to the continued operation of the building as a restaurant itself. And the more I've thought about this building, the more I've come to the conclusion that the best interest of the citizens and especially the surrounding property owners and other businesses would be better served by trying to lock in a monetary investment amount into refurbishing the building as well as obtaining a fair market price for title to the property. The issue of improving access to the balcony is critical to me. If you've ever been in the building, you know the view is great from up there, but asking servers to climb those stairs with platters of food and drinks is tough. That area has always been underutilized, and I would love to see a plan that gets more paying customers upstairs at those tables, whether it's a dumb waiter, some other structural idea. We'll leave that to be fleshed out later by the engineers or architects capable of solving that problem. But as we recall from the Art Space Project, proceeding under the redevelopment statute still requires that the city put the property out for upset bid once the terms, conditions, restrictions, and contractual language have been established. This would give either party, even Mr. Sackett, a chance to meet those conditions and still an opportunity to buy the property. So having said that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that the city enter into negotiations with Epic Chop House, Jim Marasso, and Richard Mack to develop a redevelopment contract for the web theater that will include such other terms, among such other terms and conditions, as may be brought back to the city council in final form as negotiated by city staff the following. The installation and such reconstruction is needed to install a larger grease trap sufficient to accommodate the size of the restaurant facility. Repair of the kitchen flooring above the grease trap. Constructing an access from the alleyway to the grease trap in order to improve accessibility. Modification of the balcony and ancillary seating areas to improve accessibility and consistency with the redevelopment of the building. The installation of fixtures and equipment appropriate to the scale and level of service expected of a restaurant at this location. Exterior alterations and improvements that emphasize the architectural history of the web theater. A monetary investment commitment of at least three hundred thousand to implement these items as well as other infrastructure and aesthetic improvements. A purchase price of at least three hundred and seventy-five thousand. The proposed redevelopment agreement must come back to the city council for approval and then must be advertised for an upset bid as required by law. And after the upset bid process is completed, the final bid and redevelopment agreement will come back to city council for final approval. And as we've heard from both parties tonight, there were even some other ideas that may be discussed with staff and added to this, but there again, it would be brought back to us. But that is a long motion, but it is the motion I have written down and would like to propose.
Second.
Did you get all that except me?
I'll give you a copy.
There is a motion, and there is a second. Any questions? Yes, sir.
I have one comment, and that would be, again, after thinking about this some more, I believe there was, what, seven hundred thousand dollars borrowed for the redevelopment of this property?
Yes.
And, but I mean, it was a combination of a hundred thousand from one source and et cetera, et cetera. But the point is, there was seven hundred thousand dollars, and correct me if I'm wrong, all those dollars were expended. Is that not correct?
Yes, it was given as a grant to Mr. Levickia and went into the building, and they were paid as reimbursables.
Okay. So that being said, if there was at least seven hundred thousand dollars of investment put in that building, then anything that we can do to continue to increase the value of that building going forward, I would encourage, and that means I will vote for this motion. But I think it's not just what happens today, but where does this take us? So you could take probably going forward just the reinvestment of an additional three hundred thousand dollars in this building, you know, building on that tax base. So, you know, even though the actual purchase price may be less than the other offer, I think it won't take long to see the pendulum swing the other way positive for the city.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I too have some thoughts, and I did not go into as much detail as Councilman Pierceall. However, I did look through some archival information, and I find that we really went down this road in 2010. And where we find ourselves again is at a crossroad of the city being in the restaurant business again. And I think we have an opportunity with the high bid to go ahead and divest ourselves of the responsibilities of trying to legislate what may or may not be a good restaurant concept within the city. I feel that that is somewhat out of our, being in the restaurant business, and many of us have said that before, and frankly, several of our, members of our body have also been very vocal about not being in the finance business of property sales and development. So with that, I have an issue with supporting this motion, number one, and I would like to offer a competing motion that would allow us to take the high bid and to close this chapter and move forward with what really should be the intrinsic business, in my opinion, of government and not really conceptualizing what an eating establishment should be. So that's my perspective.
That's the motion?
That is correct, sir.
Is there a second?
Did that complete my motion?
Which one? How would you do that?
If it's offered as an amendment to the motion, there would need to be a second. Is there a second?
There is, for lack of a second. By the way, Mr. Munn, one thing that was not mentioned that I take into consideration, I think, about being in the restaurant business, I believe that there's a certain amount of money in the bank now that is paid by the previous owner. Is that correct? That we, how much do we owe?
We have a balance of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we owe over the next, you know, let's see, about fifteen years, there's, which we might be able to pay that off in, just in maybe a shorter period of time, about four hundred and fifty. So the net we have is somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand dollars.
We act on the motion at this time?
Unless there's further discussion.
Is there further discussion? Did you, and I'm...
I mean, idea, but I got it answered.
It was covered? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor. A long motion.
Long motion.
Long motion. Is there a second to Mr. Pierceall's motion?
It's already been seconded.
It's been seconded. Okay. Been so long. Any other discussion, questions? All in favor of this motion, raise your hand, please. All opposed? Okay. Passes. As long as it is. Thank you very much. We can go back very quickly, if you can, please, Mr. Munn, to the item ten. I don't mean quickly to do it, but before we...
Thank you.
On the fiscal public hearing for the budget, very close to our heart.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is the public hearing for the 2015-2016 budget. It is required by statute. Every time a city considers a new budget, they're required to hold a public hearing. We always hold this just before our budget session so that, in fact, if someone's here and would like to comment on the budget, that we can take that into account. This information has been available. It's been at the library and available, and so this is the opportunity to let citizens speak to the proposed budget for fiscal year 1516.
Okay, I would open the public hearing. I've got it marked. Is there anyone that has a comment regarding the budget for 201516? Exhibit ten, please. Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Public hearing, and is there a second? Second. All right, discussion?
Somewhat unrelated, but this budget looks pretty straightforward. I would just ask council, mayor, and staff if we can focus our efforts on a one single additional budget session to complete this business. That would be my preference. If anybody has a problem with that, I don't have a problem with their problem, but that would be my vote. So if we could proceed in that fashion, I think that would be good, efficient government. Thank you.
Requires the city manager to talk less as well.
Oh, I see.
That could be arranged.
Yep. What is it that we have, two?
We do. We do.
Yes, there it is.
We can get it done Thursday.
Well, Thursday at 5:30 at the, at Hilton Plaza.
No, at the police department. It was moved.
It's the Hilton Plaza.
The Hilton Plaza.
Yeah, it's in there.
The Hilton Plaza.
Yeah, Hilton.
Hilton Plaza.
Hilton Plaza.
Okay. I just made that up.
So it's not the Hellion Plaza?
Off the cuff there.
Yeah, that was all right. And that was Thursday.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we did move that because the planning commission is here, and they have an item that may have some citizens coming, so they may flow upstairs. So we've moved over to the police building for Thursday night at 5:30.
We voted.
We voted, huh? So I voted affirmative since we were here.
Well, actually, we just decided that we'd have one here. Well, you can come to the second one. We just won't be there.
You would have been voting no to only one more budget session. I don't think you would have been very popular.
We'd come to get you. We'd send the police car out. Okay, item thirteen, we're almost through. Citizen committee appointments needed for 201516, and of course, that's item number thirteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Tommy Summer for another term. He's worked so hard on the new building.
I will second that, and I would tell you all that, from attending, well, just about three and a half years of ABC board meetings, that Mr. Summer has been a very, very valuable asset through the many trials and tribulations that come with putting up a new store. Additionally, and I want to be clear, that Mr. Summer recuses himself of any type of a conflict, as we all know that Mr. Summer is in a somewhat parallel business of construction. So he's had a high level of integrity there, but his business acumen as far as getting the most money for the ABC's dollar has been forthright, and I believe that he conducts himself with a high degree of honor in that position. So I would second that motion.
Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I can just make a point of order, we did have some discussion a few years ago about the process for appointments, which is it only takes one councilman to make a nomination. There's no second required, and that as many nominations as you want to make for the slot should be made at this time, and then you call them in alphabetical order. So if there are any other nominations for this slot, they should be made now.
This is a three-year term, ABC board. There's been a motion, is there, are there any other nominations or names?
Well, I'd move, if there are no other nominations, I'd move the nominations to be closed and Mr. Summer be elected.
We can do it that way. All in favor? Okay. These there. Community Development Citizens Advisory Board, Ward One is vacant. Ward Three is a position currently held by Ms. Susan Hindley, and she is interested in serving her another term, and her attendance is good.
I'll nominate Ms. Hindley.
Yeah, I nominate Ms. Hindley, Susan.
Well, I, you know, there's your ward.
Yeah, she's in my ward. Susan's a great lady. Spoke to her again today. She brings a wealth of knowledge. She's been here for quite some time, and she does an excellent job. So I'd just like to...
She was head of that department here.
She was head of this department?
In the city.
For twenty-five years, right?
Not twenty-five years, but a long time.
All in favor of this motion?
Do we move it?
Well, I didn't hear any others.
There were no other nominations, Mayor. Yeah, you're fine, Mayor.
Did you have another one?
No, sir, I have a question on this particular board whenever we're done with the nominations.
Well, the other five and six vacant. Go ahead.
Thank you. Ed, what would be that, I have someone that has exhibited some peripheral interest in this. What are the time constraints that someone would be kind of like developing with this? Because obviously, they did not want to sign up to something where some of their business interests might preclude them from attending.
Is this with community development?
That is correct.
Yeah, with community development, their role is to review the community development block grant program and to provide citizen input in terms of where we make our decisions annually, what kind of housing programs, things like that. So the, if you, if a person was a, owned a lot of real estate and owned apartments, and they wanted to participate in one of our investor, investor project, then they would not be able to do so there. But other than that, you know, most of our programs, there might be a sidewalk, a lot of homeowner rehab, things like that. So unless they are, it's actually their home that's affected or their property affected, there wouldn't be any conflict.
No, no, no. What I meant was like the time constraint, like how is it, like, does it meet monthly or in how long are the meetings?
They tend to meet about four times a year, maybe at the most six, you know, if you would have, you know, somewhere between, I would say at the most it's six. They're evening meetings, and they usually last about an hour and a half, two hours.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Munn or Clarkhead, that department, get something in writing so I can hand it to, have a half dozen thought I had, people might be interested in doing that. Mara?
Yeah, Mara. Okay.
And this is what's required, what you're doing. If you're interested, we could let you talk to Mr. Munn.
We will take...
Good idea.
So I'll get some people to serve. I think I can get somebody.
Okay. Well, we feel those vacancies. I think we'll move along to the Farmers Market Advisory Board. Mr. B.F. Beasley is interested in serving another term.
Brian Hedgepath was my nomination last year or two years ago. I'd like to take him off. And there's another guy that I know, but if someone else has somebody else to nominate, you're more than welcome to do that. The one person I was...
There's two there.
Yeah. His name is Bill Gross. He's done certain things, you know, around town and certain positions.
Planning Commission.
He was on the Planning Commission, yeah. So I just wanted to nominate him if that's okay. Or, hold on, let me, let me check with Bill to make sure that's okay, because I just discussed it with him yesterday.
Well, let's, we'll go ahead with B.F. Beasley then, if there were no others.
Close with that one slot.
Okay, the one slot. Okay, all in favor? Okay, that's good. The historic district commission, Mr. Wade?
This would be a second term.
He's interested in serving, and attendance is good.
He's vice chairman.
Is there, are there any other names? Okay.
My nomination to be closed, Mr. White.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. Planning Commission, three-year term. Ward One's position's currently held by Mr. Jerry Fleeman, and Mr. Fleeman is interested in serving another term, and his attendance is good.
I would move to nominate Mr. Jerry Fleeman to another term on the planning board.
Other names on that Ward One?
That is correct.
Okay, sir. All right, sir. And, well, let's vote.
Nice to close nomination, Mr. Fleeman.
Thank you.
I think it's a lifetime term, essentially. I think it's a lifetime term, essentially.
Yeah. The Ward four is a position currently held by Ms. Pamela Good. Note, she's interested in serving another term, and her attendance is good, and she's new, she came by at the council last...
Yes, and she is interested in serving, so I would nominate Ms. Good for a second term.
All right. All in favor?
I'll move the nominations.
They're closed, okay. Recreation Advisory Board, three-year term, Ward one, position currently held by Mr. Charles W. Sim, the third. Mr. Sim's interested in serving another term, and his attendance is poor.
Your Honor, what I'd like to do, Dave, that's your committee, I would like to speak with, I know it's, I believe it's a business commitment that he has a problem with specifically with traffic.
Right.
And before I offer that particular appointment, I would like to see if that is something that could be corrected, or if it's going to be that way, then I think that maybe we need to move in a different direction. How was his performance when he was there?
Well, he wasn't there much.
Okay.
So, but he smiled a lot, so...
You have a nice smile?
Nice smile, he's a nice guy, I mean, he's a nice guy, you know, but he just was rarely there.
Thank you.
So...
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Go right ahead.
If the vacancies are, and it says Ward six, do those people, I'm going back to the community development, do those people have to live in Ward six?
Yes, am I right?
Okay, if they don't have a ward beside them, then they don't have to live in Ward six, right?
I'll look it up in my lawyer's book.
It usually should be the way it is, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Community Development Citizens Advisory Board, I'm gonna have to look that up.
Lawyer's book, yeah. He's looking for that. Same thing with the mayoral appointment, did we vote on that?
Mayoral appointments, you do not vote on, those are the housing authority, just make those, Mr. Mayor.
All right, that's reasonable.
With...
He's interested to serve another term, and his attendance is good, and he's there. Ward one, this is the Stormwater Advisory Panel. Ward one position currently held by Mr. Bill Hathaway, he's interested in serving another term, and his attendance is good.
Mayor, if I could just ask real quick, looking down...
They're all the way down.
All the way down, except for my ward in four, I was made aware of this prior. Someone stepped forward, interested, they do not live in Ward four, however, so we are resuming that search. So having said that, I will not be filling the Ward four appointment tonight, but if the other ward appointments are okay with the respective council members, I will make the motion that we reappoint all the presented names other than Ward four at this time.
I think that's fine.
Amen.
And I have the motion to close the...
Close, close.
You're nominating all those, go.
Yes.
They all have good attendance, they are interested in serving.
I want to serve, and I'll have good attendance, unless somebody wants to change theirs, we can knock it out.
Okay, well, then you're gonna come back and go?
I will come back with Ward four to lay that...
All in favor? Okay, all right. Gastonian Tourism Development Authority, the Lodging Industry Representative is a position held by Nicole Bolt at Hampton Inn.
So you go to those, is she attending?
Yes.
I don't think, we pretty much go together, I don't think she's ever missed one, that I'm aware of, and very involved in the association.
I'll nominate Ms. Nicole Bolt.
Is her position up? Is it open?
Yes, I believe the term is up, it's gonna be up tough.
All in favor, please, ma'am.
I'll close the nominations.
Close nominations, okay.
Do it right.
And then there's a three-year term of travel promotions, destination, marketing, vacant, is that right?
I have a nomination for that, Mayor.
Yeah.
Ms. Kristy Ferguson, she formerly worked with the community watch groups, but she's also very involved in outdoor activities and travel, and kind of represents a younger vision, a more outdoor, what we have to offer with our parks and so forth, so I think it might be a unique perspective, and she is very willing, and she's very good with social media as well, which kind of goes into that whole tourist and travel mindset at this time, and she is very willing to serve, so at this time, I'd like to nominate Kristy Ferguson.
I make the motion to close the nominations.
Close the nominations. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. Chamber of Commerce, do they do that?
Mr. Mayor, one of the things I'd like maybe the council to consider is, the Tourism Development Authority, we used to have three people on it, the mayor, and the manager, and someone from the hotels, and then we, it was expanded to seven, and we are sometimes having a little difficulty with quorums, just because J.D., who is a great representative and others, they're traveling a lot, and trying to get everyone there. One of the things that we were looking at is maybe to draw it down to five, but have two from the hotel, by state statute, you have to have at least a third representing hotels, so you gotta have at least two of the five from there. The mayor and the manager serve at the pleasure of the council, so we're appointed by the council, and so that would leave one more person than the individual that Councilman Pierceall just indicated, that would give you your five. With Jesse, now Jesse is talented, and he shows up and everything else, but really, one of the problems with this Tourism Development Board is, is they are to have oversight over the dollars that we receive, but the city has pledged those dollars to repay the bonds, and so there is a little frustration, because you would like to have all those dollars to be able to move back and forth, but you can't do much. If you do much, you're creating another problem, and so it is a little frustration there, and so I think having a bigger board is, it isn't, you can't get your arms around it like you can some of the other committees, so I'd like to consider bringing that down to five, and maybe not necessarily filling this position here.
Right, and I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Lund today about this committee, and after hearing the explanation, a little more detail than he went into just now, I agree with him, and we had discussed earlier that maybe down the road, we'd look into it, but I see no reason not to reduce this, this development authority at this time to five members.
Well, it's by resolution, so we would have to bring the resolution back to council and vote on it.
Right.
Right. Okay, I thought you were making a motion to...
Oh, no, 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 no. But I would like to instruct staff to go ahead and pursue that, I see no reason to continue filling these other positions if we're gonna reduce it.
We'll bring that resolution back to the council for consideration.
Yeah, we have a problem on that committee getting Jesse, you know, excited.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure.
Pull it out of him. Zoning Board of Adjustment, three-year terms, regular member, position currently held by Mr. Don Grant Jr.
Nominate Don Grant.
Okay.
What, these are three-year terms?
Mm-hmm, that's what it says.
Didn't feel long, it's about time.
I believe you're correct, sir.
Hasn't he already announced? No.
Okay, so your motion is...
I nominate...
And it closes?
I'll make the motion to close nominations, except Mr. Grant.
All right, and all in favor? A regular, alternate member is Myra McGill, and she's interested in another term, and her attendance is good.
And I'll nominate Mr. McGill again, serve another term.
Okay.
Motion to close nominations and approve.
All in favor, please? There we are, thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, no, we've got some more to do, come back on that. Move along to number fifteen, well, we're gonna pull item fourteen tonight, Ed, don't want you to take too long, so seriously, we'll go to item fifteen, which is a consideration of cancellation of the July seventh city council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, with regard to the item, the, see, I guess it's item fourteen, the deals with the funding?
Yeah.
Yeah, the GDDC couldn't be here, they wanted to be here to discuss this issue, they want to be here at the next meeting, our next city council meeting, so that they can explain why these funds are necessary, the hundred thousand. One of the things I would just ask the council to do is take a look at this memo, because one of the things is a hundred thousand dollars, you know, it's sizable, the county, it's been reported in the paper, and the county's already funded it, and I think Mount Holly has agreed to it also, I think Belmont has not yet, but the other cities are being requested at five thousand, but it's something to consider now, because if we move this hundred thousand, it has to come from someplace. So that kind of conversations are conversation, but I think when the GDDC comes, they're gonna wanna just be really telling you that where it comes from, as far as they're concerned, I don't think it's an issue, but tourism development is where the county had paid for theirs, it could be where we take it as well, but if we do, again, we have a fund balance now, but those folks that will be here in 2019, in 2020, the line crosses. So that, just, that's our conversation about how best to fund that project, and we'll do that at the next council.
I have a comment on that. I have a little reservation about bringing the GDD, what is this, which acronym is this now?
Bob Clay wanted to come and speak.
Right, and I have all the respect for Mr. Clay, and for Mark, and the other guys in the organization, but the next council meeting is going to be packed, we are gonna have so many presentations, that's where all the schools come in, and I guarantee you that's not gonna be a short presentation with them asking for a hundred thousand dollars, and I'm sorry they couldn't make the meeting tonight, but maybe they need to make, wait till the first meeting of the next month.
I've got one other comment, too, and that is, is, you know, we just approved for the funds for the widening of Tiptman Road, okay? So how did we get to that number, all right? So this is just the converse of that in this situation, I just don't understand the process that's being used here, where they're throwing out a number which is totally pie in the sky, in my opinion, and now all of a sudden, then they're gonna do an RFE process, and then all of a sudden magically, all that money's gonna get spent. So my recommendation would be, whether it be tonight, or in two weeks or four weeks, would be, you go do your RFE process, you go get, you know, your person that you want to do it, and have them come back with a proposed budget, and let's look at the line items and see what this is gonna give us, and that's, now let's talk about the money, because this is just a blank check, and I just don't understand how they think we are gonna feel comfortable giving this money without any idea of who's gonna use it, how it's gonna get spent, you know, it needs to be the other way around, in my opinion, because all of a sudden, you're showing your cards, and all of a sudden, you know, everybody's gonna say, sure, we can spend your four hundred thousand dollars, but if one firm can come in and say, well, look, we can do this for a hundred and seventy-five, and another firm says, well, we can do this for two and a quarter, you might get better value, so I don't like the whole process.
Well, and...
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I'm trying to follow the rules.
I heard.
And this is a multi-year commitment, this is not just a one-year commitment, the way I understand it, too, is it's multi-year, I think three years, isn't it?
Yes.
A three-year commitment.
Yeah.
So I totally agree with what's been said tonight, because we're committing not only for this year, this new budget coming up, but also for two more years down the road. Well, I think that, here again, we need, before we can make any commitment, we need to know where the money's going, how it's gonna be spent, and who's gonna have jurisdiction over it, okay? Because in three years, whoever is in that group right now might be in an entirely different group, okay? So I think there has to be some accountability, there has to be some transparency and all that, and I don't think we have that yet.
As I said, I think there's gonna be a lot of questions, and that's gonna be a big, big discussion, and I hate to try to cram that in on a night that's already really, really, really full.
Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Your Honor. Another issue, and I don't disagree with what's been said, but another concern that I have here is, where are the milestone points where we are checking to see the effectiveness of what's being done? Councilman Pierceall and I had a discussion a couple months ago about, you know, how do things roll out, and are they working, okay? We need to have some built-in checks and balances. Now, in item number three, they make reference to a survey instrument that was done that identified what these shortcomings were in our county. One way to gauge effectiveness is to go back and to resurvey those same people after part of this is underway, to see if their image is improving, and if it's not, maybe we're not, we're still not hitting that mark, and I don't know whether we will or not, but what I'm saying is, we need to have not only some checks and balances, but some milestone points where we check the progress. That's all I have, sir.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, just two things, one, on item ten, it goes into a steering committee, and it says anybody who contributes over a hundred thousand dollars, there'll be two seats appointed. So ours would be, we would get two seats, and I guess the county would get two seats, but then it goes down to where one seat will be awarded for somebody who has twenty-five thousand dollars and up to a hundred thousand.
Right.
But if you are contributing less than twenty-five thousand, they're not giving you a half a seat, but they're giving you a seat also, so it's almost like...
You're sharing a seat, it says. All municipalities contributing...
Oh, you share one seat, yeah.
When you share one seat, which...
It would just...
I don't, I'm not even sure how that works.
So, yeah, I don't either, but, anyway, that's gotta be worked out somewhere.
Really skinny people.
We would get, we would get two seats at the table, and we would appoint people who we would want to, you know, because whether it's the Shield Museum, or the rest of the city, to be really engaged with that group, to make sure that Gastonia's, I mean, I'm sure that their effort is gonna be countywide, and they'll wanna talk about the features that exist throughout the county, but, you know, you will wanna make sure that if we get to that, that those two people that you pick are really very engaged, and go to all these meetings, and report back to the council, I think that's...
And we need to get the lion's share on that, I mean, what I mean by that is, we want them talking about...
Proportional share.
Crowders...
Yeah.
The Shield Museum...
Yeah.
Rankin Lake, things like that, in order to, because this whole campaign is to change the image of what Gaston County is supposedly the laughing, the butt of jokes and stuff, outside.
But we have so many, we have so many good facilities here in Gastonia and throughout the county, and this is an, you know, and, yeah, just we'll make sure that, I mean, our representatives will be at the table.
Jim also, it's not only to change the image, it's also to change existing perception.
Here in town.
No, it's how people, what their perceptions are now, and we wanna make sure that we go ahead and they eventually have a favorable perception of us if they don't have one now, in addition to the image branding.
Now, is this just, are these gonna be TV spots, or are they gonna be radio spots, are they gonna be print media? Those are things, I'm sorry.
These are the things, well, I'm just, didn't mean to interrupt you, this is what we're going to...
Discuss the night.
Discuss when they come before us, whatever, whenever that is, Ed, is that right?
Yes.
I mean, we can talk about it, but we don't know the answers.
Right.
And I've talked to Mark Kramer a little, but I don't still understand it till I, you know, study a little bit, and there's a lot of questions that's gotta be there, so, but let's gather them up, and let's remember, might even give it to them ahead of time, and so they can be ready, that'll rush things along a little bit, so, okay. Now, back to the, is that all that you were gonna say?
Yes, and if you'd like, do you want me to talk to Mark Kramer and find out if they want to do it at the next meeting, or really, you would get a better, there would be a lot more time at the following meeting, is that...
In this room.
Consensus of the county?
First meeting in June.
And just so I'm not speaking out of turn, Jenny, next, our next meeting is the one with all the presentations from the high schools, yeah, so that's, there's gonna be a couple agenda items coming forward, too, that...
I'm not feeling well at it.
Yeah, and I'm not saying we can't have a long meeting, I'm just saying when we're doing all this other recognition, it's hard then to bring in this when it's important, I mean, this is a hundred thousand dollar decision, and here a long presentation, then everybody's...
I think that would be to their benefit.
Yeah, be to their benefit.
At the smaller meeting. Okay, now, you wanted to talk about the possibly canceling the July seventh, which is on a Tuesday, but the July fourth, the few days before, but it's still...
On a Saturday.
On a Saturday, yeah.
I'm gonna move it.
Yes.
I'm gonna move it.
That's in a second, okay, and any discussion? All in favor? Okay, Jenny, you know, um, city attorney's report.
Mr. Mayor, two quick items, one, I don't know how many meetings ago it was, but the council approved accepting the donation of property across from... Mr. Mayor, two quick items. One, I don't know how many meetings ago it was, but the council approved accepting a donation of property across from Franklin Square from the Lineberger family conditioned on the re-execution of a certain agreement that was done in nineteen eighty-eight. And it took a long time to get that finalized, but we did get the signed agreement back from the Lineberger family last week. So I expect a closing shortly with the Lineburgers transferring the property to the city. Okay? And then on the Springfield trip, uh, we have a pledge of nine thousand dollars from the Community Foundation. We've raised about five hundred dollars on the GoFundMe. Mr. McAtier came in and wrote a check for two hundred and fifty dollars and Mr. Anderson, the author of the Bunny Book, wrote a check for a hundred dollars. So basically, I, I, I did on the GoFundMe site, I did. But anyway, we, we need, if our original estimate of fifteen thousand is right, and it, it may be going up because I know Mr. Dillinger's getting kind of nervous about booking the flights, uh, because he has to have players' names and he's still waiting for those names from post, from post twenty-three. But get out there, nudge your friends, uh, beat the bushes. We, we probably got about five and a half thousand more to go if, if fifteen thousand dollars is the correct estimate. Okay? That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Well, that's good that I was gonna bring up, and I'm glad you did, and it's exactly in the scope of things, it's, it's, it's not a lot for all those people. And I know that we were trying, as you recommended, Mr. Campbell, we
Did that work out or?
The, um, did it work out on that? Have you heard?
I, I, I did get up with USAir, or we contacted Bob Morgan, actually.
Yes.
And, and, uh, Bob gave us a contact person.
Yep.
And then it went through their system and the letter that came back from us said that they only help Mecklenburg County, that they don't help the surrounding counties. And that they only, uh, there, it's the STEM program, which is part of their education and another. They've decided to help those and they, it was, uh, said that we, we don't help you. So next time you talk to people with USAir, I mean, you know, that...
Next time the airport comes up for a vet.
I'll try to get you, I'll try to get you the email, I'll send you the emails.
Do they land at our airport, Ed?
Let's talk to Delta.
Never see landing for them in Gaston.
Okay, that's all for you.
But we are, we are working on that reservation and, well, uh, and Chuck will actually also take that, the bus up there, too, and will be taking a couple of the folks from the Legion with him. And so there's, yeah, we're, we're working on it.
Okay.
And as Ash said, just need a little bit more money.
City, uh, Managers' Report.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, there are just so many good things going on in Gastonia in the month of May. You can look at this, and this doesn't even have the downtown concerts. I mean, there are just so many, many good things. Uh, also, the legislature's meeting, uh, I went there last week with Metro Mayor's. With, there, there may be funding that comes back that gives us an option. You know, the privilege license is gone at the end of this year. There may come back with a business registration option for us. We'll see if that really comes to pass and we'll give that consideration if and when they ever do pass it. Uh, there are so many bills, uh, the, the House is moving the, 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 um, budget forward now. The, the big issue, a lot of the big issues has to do with the sale, sales tax and the sales tax formulas. All the changes in the sales tax formula, whether it's the Rucho Plan or the original Hunter Plan, give us more money, not less. So, and also the county more money and not less. So, uh, where you read in, about Charlotte, you know, and how they're losing in those arrangements, it isn't so much rural urban as it is high wealth, low wealth, a little bit of that as well. So we'll watch it. Uh, it is, this thing's gonna go on for months, uh, well past our budget. So we'll just, we'll just wait and see how it's going, but, uh, we'll be monitoring that as it goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you. City Council, Mrs. Craig.
Just one question. Uh, do we get more sales tax? Do we get to keep it?
Possibly. One of the what, what, uh, what, yeah.
Any other question?
There, there. Uh, Jason Sane, who is represented from Lincolnton, uh, submitted a bill which was not, not the restructuring of the formula where you gotta work it through the county and all the rest of this. But even in those cases, we would get more money. But Jason's bill is an optional, uh, quarter cent sales tax by municipality. And if we got that, then if the city wanted to, you could pass that and that extra quarter cent come directly to the city. And that's a, a, a statewide bill. Uh, so we'll see whether it gets any traction. But if we did that, that would be an ongoing new revenue source and an opportunity to tie it to something that you would wanna improve in the city. I think that would be, and I think the way they're talking also, the way it's written, is just a resolution in the City Council. It's not a vote. But that may, that's just a bill. But from Lincoln County, Jason Sane, if you get a chance to talk to him.
I just wanna remind everybody that the post office is collecting, that's what it relates me, collecting food this Saturday, so get a bunch of food out.
That's this Saturday?
I think tonight.
He just said one question. Mr. Gallagher? I can't pronounce it, but I'll play it.
Two things. One, um, went to Sims Park this Saturday and sampled some of the Beer Fest beer. Uh, that was quite, uh, an exciting time. I saw Councilman Carol in there. He was, uh, once again serving up, uh, his delicious brew. One thing I have, though, is on, um, greenways. We have two green, greenway crossings that go under roads. One's on Garrison and the other one is over by Hudson Road. They need help. Um, I don't know if we could use it as a Boy Scout project or something because when you go underneath the one in, at Garrison, it's right next to the stream and the stream has pretty much taken it over. If we can put some type of, um, recycled material, plastic that use for decks now, if we could put that underneath and raise it up somewhat, the water, you know, you wouldn't be stepping in puddles and puddles of water and it wouldn't be the yuck that you have to go through to get to the other side. It's a shame. I mean, it costs us so much money to put these two in place that they've just, eh.
What, what we did back, what we did back then was, uh, we used the existing drains that are under there and they're properly sized for the, the type of a flood that comes through. And on a rainy day, you can't use it. You just can't go through there. And so both in Hudson Boulevard's case, but really more directly with Garrison, those, those are two old box culverts where the water went through. And what we did is kind of allowing people to walk through the wet, wet, kinda a little wet on that side so that you could get under there. They were not constructed actually with it, you know? So that's the only way we could get underneath at the time.
But could we put a platform underneath there so you can actually, something that's, I'm saying plastic, so it's not gonna rot?
You're in the flood, you're in the flood plain and, and
Trust me, go.
City engineers here, so we can take a look to see, but I think that's gonna be very difficult, but...
Look.
Trust me.
You could build a platform just about six inches high and allow a wheelchair to get under there and all without running into a bunch of puddles and stuff and saying, what is this? This is what I hear, okay? I hear this from people walking by. This is where my ci, my city's tax dollars are going?
Remember we're gonna repay, we're gonna pay the whole parking lot off.
Yeah, yeah, I know that.
Here's my thing, though, Jim. Our two are not near as bad as any other city that's done the exact same thing. Go run the greenways in Charlotte. Some of those aren't even passable. So ours are actually good for that kind of, and it's done in cities everywhere.
But we can make it better, Todd, by just putting in a platform and run it straight through. If you follow what I mean, Rusty. Okay, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate your consideration.
What about maybe a slip and slide underneath there? Ash might not like that, the liability. I, I, I need to clarify, uh, Mr. Gallagher's remarks about the Sims, um, event Saturday, uh, the Grizzlies, uh, Jayce's event was very good. Uh, it was not my beer that I was serving, it was my friend's homebrew that I was serving. Um, yeah, but, but anyway, no, uh, thank you to the chief. Uh, his on-duty and off-duty officers, uh, did a great job. I think the crowd was fairly well behaved and, uh, always good to see good events around Gastonia. So happy Cinco de Mayo. I have no other report.
Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, sir. I was going to also, um, wish everyone a happy Cinco de Mayo, Dave. Congrats to my niece Mary, and she got married, uh, over the weekend to her husband Brian, uh, Queen, his last name. Uh, she's a paramedic in, uh, DeKalb County and he's a firefighter in the city of Atlanta. Final numbers for Cancer Services Faces of Hope, they're not in yet, but right now it looks like this, uh, we surpassed last year. And just wanted to thank, uh, Dave and your wife and Porter for coming on down. And I think it was a pretty good time. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
You have all these, uh, 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 separators like you have on the highway that, that, uh, concrete that separate from, the word had some problems.
The Jersey, Jersey barriers. Yes.
We don't want those barriers out there. Well, it's been out there almost two years. How come they can't go ahead and fix that one way or the other?
You know, that, that project is, uh, the next meeting of the Transportation Committee, we're gonna look at options. Uh, there's a failure of a storm drain, uh, that's underneath the road and also a failure of the side of the hill. So there's two things going on there. And one, we met with the neighborhood. One of the proposals is actually to close the street to, and, and another one is not to close the street and they have two different dollar amounts. And Rusty, is that four hundred thousand dollars? Yeah, so it's either two hundred and fifty thousand or four hundred thousand to fix that problem. Then that's four, yeah, then that's four hundred thousand. And so, well, that's... The engineering has been trying to find a, a fiscally sound way to deal with that without having to do almost a half a million dollars worth of work. But, you know, so anyway, that's gonna route through the Transportation Committee and onto council soon.
Okay, I tried to update, teach the, uh, Evening Rotary Club what we're doing in the Mayor Council and the city of Gastonia, uh, last week and in the evening. And then a couple days later, uh, Councilman Gallagher and I were at the, uh, Gaston, and I would call it Endoscope. But, Dr. Carl, how you pronounce it? Yeah, see, that, I, I, that's what my daughter taught me. Okay, endoscopy. But we, either way, we, we opened it. It's a brand new. No, no samples, nothing, uh, didn't even match the homebrew.
You scoped it out? Mayor, you scoped it out?
I move with you, Aaron. You stay here, though.
And I do have Chuck Sims on.
Oh, okay.
You indicate we collected two hundred and fifty thousand from Leveke.